Okay. Hey, everybody. Welcome back. We are at our rev- we are in our eighteenth session of the Book of Revelation. In what we're calling Twenty for 2020. So we're taking twenty looks at the Book of Revelation for 2020 vision to see clearly. A lot of times we say, man, my hindsight's 2020. I wish I would've known. I wish I would have. Listen, as believers in Jesus Christ, God wants our vision to be clear, crystal clear. He doesn't want us to have a foggy vision of Him or a distorted view. He wants us to see, and so as we study the Book of Revelation, uh, we're titled at Twenty for 2020. My desire is that you'll see Jesus in His second coming, that you'll see Jesus in the Book of Revelation, that, that God will reveal Himself to us. The first five words of the Book of Revelation summarize it perfectly. The revelation of Jesus Christ. We read the Book of Revelation so that God will reveal Himself to us and reveal the end times. And so I'm super excited you're here with us. If you've missed any of our sessions, you can go to our church website, whitestonechurchtx.com. You could go to our, uh, scroll down. You can contact us. We'll send you our nightly notes. Uh, we'll send them, you know, we'll send all of them to you if you've missed all of them. Uh, if you missed, you know, certain ones, we'll fill in and we can send you all of our notes. All of our, uh, messages are, uh, on our website and on our YouTube channel. Whitestonechurchtx is our YouTube channel. Subscribe, like us. We're trying to reach a thousand subscribers so that we can go YouTube live also, like we're doing on Facebook right now. So thank you. God bless you for hanging out with us for eighteen different sessions. And so, uh, it's gonna be good tonight. We're gonna be at the white throne judgment seat of Christ and the Bima seat of Christ. And so we're gonna take, take a look at judgment tonight. And so let's pray. We'll get started. We're gonna dive into chapter twenty of Revelation. So Father God, we love you and we bless you. And God, we pray that you'll speak to us like never before, God, that our hearts will be open, our minds will be ready to receive, and that God, your vision, you'll open up our eyes, that you'll unstop our ears, take the scales from our eyes and open up our mouths to speak for you. And, uh, Father, we bless you and we honor you and we praise you. And I thank you for my friends joining us tonight in the mighty name of Jesus, all the way from Zambia, Africa, to Roatan, Honduras, to Dallas, Texas, to Minnesota, way up north, to, to the borders of, of, uh, Seattle, uh, down to, down to Texas. And so, God, we thank you for everybody joining us in Jesus' name. And everybody said, amen, amen. Turn with me to Revelation, chapter twenty. We're gonna start in verse eleven. Uh, we, we covered the first ten verses last night. If you missed that, you can check out session seventeen. But we're gonna be in chapter eighteen, uh, chapter twenty verse, session eighteen, chapter twenty, verse eleven. John says this, "I saw a great white throne and him who sat on it, from whose face heaven and earth fled away." This is the face of Jesus. And when it says they fled away, there was no place for them to hide. There, no, there was found no place for them. So what that means is all of us are gonna go to judgment. Rich, poor, slave, free, educated, uneducated, popular, unpopular, fat, skinny, tall, short. We all go to judgment. Nobody escapes judgment. Hitler, Satan, Billy Graham, Grandma, Grandpa, we all go to judgment. There's nowhere to run. And I saw the dead. Now, I want you to underscore that in verse twelve. I saw the dead. When it says dead there, that doesn't mean just physically dead people. It means spiritually dead. The Bible says that if you accept Jesus today and you die to yourself today, physically you'll breathe your last, you'll die physically, but spiritually you'll ever be alive. And so for a Christian that, that received Jesus before they died, the crazy thing is your last breath on earth is your first breath in eternity. So when it says dead here, it's talking about unbelievers, and that's very important for this judgment. "I saw the dead, small and great, standing before God, and books were opened." And the word books there has an S on it. It's plural. It's books. "And books were opened, and I saw another book," singular. So it's gonna be cool how we di- dissect the books versus book. "And another book was opened, which is the book of life. And the dead were judged according to their works by the things which were written in the books," plural. "The sea gave up the dead who were in it, and death in Hades delivered up the dead who were in them, and they were judged, each one according to his works. Then death and Hades were cast into the lake of fire." This is the second death. "And anyone not found written in the book of life was cast into the lake of fire." So when we look at this throne of judgment, let me just talk about the two different thrones or the two different judgments. There are gonna be, there's a judgment for unbelievers, which is this judgment, and there's a judgment for believers. Now, when we say judgment, there's two types of judgment. One is the judgment of condemnation, uh, condemning someone, punishing them. The Bible says, "For there's no condemnation for those who are in Christ Jesus," Romans, chapter eight, verse one. So what this means is that if Jesus Christ lives in your heart and you've received Jesus as your Lord and Savior, then you will, you will go to be in God's kingdom and not suffer judgment for the works of sin that you did. But to the believer, we will go to a judgment of works that we did as believers. And so this thing of works is very important. We can't work our way into heaven. We can't earn our way into the kingdom of God. That comes through the blood of Jesus Christ. And so let's be very, very clear. If you've received Jesus as your Lord and Savior on this earth, then He did the work of salvation. He lived the perfect life. He died on the cross. You received that. And so that work, Jesus did, and we received that, and so therefore we get to go to be with Jesus. So, so to the person that receives Jesus on this earth, we get our pass or our ticket, if you will, our entrance into heaven is paid for. Now, we will be judged as believers for our works that we did as believers, but we won't suffer punishment for our sin. To the person that hasn't received Jesus as their Lord and Savior, the ones that rejected Him, the ones that received the mark or the ones that died before any of that time, people that have already died that didn't trust in Jesus as their Lord and Savior, they will be judged for their works, what they did. And so when we look at this judgment, let's just differentiate. So we're at the judgment here of the unbeliever. Let's also recognize there's different levels of judgment. There's different levels of hell. There's different punishments in hell. There's a great book by the author John Bever called Driven for Eternity. And in that, um, in that audio book or the physical book, there's an audio, um, audio fiction story called Apabell. I highly suggest, you, I think you can still find it on YouTube, but it's called Apabell by John Bever. It's a great picture into this insight. Um, but when we look at this judgment, we see dead, small, great, standing before God, and books were opened. Let's also recognize, and I'll go through some scriptures here in a minute. Let's also recognize that there are volumes of books written about you. Everything we do, everything we say, there, it is recorded in these volumes of books. Now, before you freak out and say, oh, my God, I'm gonna be judged for all my bad stuff. When you receive Jesus Christ, you're forgiven of your sin. So God's not gonna bring that back and throw it in our face or judge us for that. But there's still books written about you. I don't know how God's gonna differentiate all that bad stuff. If he's gonna leave some chapters out or some volumes out, I don't know. But just know this, that the books are recording your life. I truly believe there's a scribe angel that is just recording all the stuff you do. See, God says, "Don't let your right hand know what your left hand is doing, because the God who sees in heaven will reward you for things you did, even though man won't reward you or doesn't know about it." There's books written about you. There's also the Lamb's Book of Life or the Book of Life. Now, the Book of Life is not recording your life. It's recording your name. So we'll look at several instances. There's references all in the Old Testament and the New Testament about this Book of Life. And they all talk about, is your name written in the Book of Life? So if you could just envision this huge book in heaven. It's like a reservation book maybe or a, um, a register. And when we face judgment, God's gonna say, are they written in the Lamb's Book of Life? Now, what that means, are they, have they repented of their sins? Have they received Jesus? So to get your name written in the Lamb's Book of Life, you have to receive Jesus. And, and so we die to ourself here, and then we're written into His Book of Life. But we also, also have to know there's other books written. And so that's what the difference when it says there's books and another book, which is the Book of Life. And listen to verse twelve, "And the dead were judged according to their works." Listen, as a believer in Christ, I'm so thankful I won't be judged according to my works. I won't be judged. I won't suffer penalty for all the, the sin that I've committed, all the pride and the prejudice and the, the greed and the lust and the, the, just the, the, the unforgiveness and the bitterness and the envy and the strife, all the things I've done. Jesus Christ paid the price for those sins. He paid the penalty. He went to hell. He, he went to the cross. He became our sin. So don't walk away from this study going, oh, my God, God's gonna judge me for all the bad things I've done. If you don't know Him, He will. But if you know Jesus Christ, Jesus Christ has already been judged for those works. So let's recognize this, that this is a bad day for those who are unbelievers in Christ. For example, Hitler, who we will just assume based upon his life and the way he lived his life, Hitler didn't know Jesus. So he stands before God, and again, we're presuming, and he stands before God and God says, man, I'm judging you for all the, the sin you committed. Well, he'll be judged for that. Other people will be judged unbelievers in Christ. So that's what it says. That's what it means. "And the dead were judged according to their works by things which were written in the books." Listen, there's no exaggeration. There's nothing missed. There's nothing forgotten. There's nothing left out. There's nothing added. We just have to know that God sees all that we do. We can't hide our sin from God. "The sea gave up the dead who were in them." Let's also remember this before we go on to the sea. Physical death is the first death. Physical death is the first death. Spiritual death is the second death. If you don't know Jesus, you'll die twice. If you know Jesus, you'll die here and in the physical, but you'll live forever, so you won't die after this life. If you don't know Jesus, you'll only, you'll not only die in this life, but you'll be spiritually dead in the next life. We have to remember, those who are in hell are alive, but they're spiritually dead to Christ. So the sea, verse thirteen, "The sea gave up the dead who were in it, and death in Hades were delivered up in the dead who were in them." When it says the sea gave up the dead, that's a quite interesting statement because, um, you know, don't exactly know what that means, but just think about this, when the, when Jesus delivered the demoniac at the tomb and He cast out the two thousand demons, He cast them into pigs, and then they went into the lake or into the water. And so this could be a temporary holding place or refuge for demons, but even demons will be judged. Even, even the enemy, the fallen angels, will be judged. "The sea gave up the dead who were in it, and death in Hades delivered up the dead who were in them." Let's remember this, that when Jesus died, He took the penalty for our death or the penalty for our sin. So what do you and I deserve? What do we deserve as believers? Or, let me just back up. What do we deserve as people? The Bible says, I deserve death because of my sin. So if I sin and I don't know Jesus, my due payment, my just payment is death. When Jesus died on the cross for our sin, He took the penalty of death. Now, the penalty of death didn't mean, that just meant that we were set free from the penalty, but we still would not be with Him because He takes hell. He takes Hades. Hades is a temporary holding place, if you will. Uh, Sheol is the other name given to it. Death, Hades is like a temporary holding tank until judgment. Now, we're not talking purgatory. You can't pray somebody out of Hades. We're not talking about something unbiblical, but a good reference is the, the, the story when Jesus tells about the rich man and Lazarus. And there was a great chasm. The rich man is in hell or Hades or Sheol awaiting judgment. Lazarus is with God. The thief on the cross was with God in paradise the day he died. But if you don't know God, the scriptures would indicate you go to a holding place until judgment. So this judgment is a place where death and Hades, they give up their dead, but then those two entities are cast into the lake of fire. So the lake of fire is different than death and different than Hades. It's the eternal hell. It's the eternal separation from God. So the fact when Jesus says, hey, I'm throwing death into the lake of fire, there is no more death for the believer in Christ. So if Jesus Christ lives in your heart today, physically your shell will die, but spiritually you'll never die. You'll never go to the second death. If you're an unbeliever in Christ, you'll die physically and your eternal spirit will then go to judgment and you'll die a second eternal death, meaning go to hell or the lake of fire. So I know that's a little confusing, but I hope that brings some clarity. "The sea gave up the dead who were in it, death in Hades delivered up the dead who were in them, and they were judged, each one according to his works." See, a lot of times when somebody sins against us, we want vengeance. We want to get back to them. We want revenge. God says vengeance is mine. Listen, no matter what somebody's done to you, no matter how evil they've been to you or how much harm they caused you, the truth is, we don't want them to pay the price for their works. The price that we will pay for our works is eternal damnation in a lake of fire separated from God. When this study's over, I'm gonna do a study. Uh, when we complete Revelation in a week or so, I'm going to start a new study on hell because there's a lot of believers that we don't understand what hell is. And we'll dive deep into, um, the topic of hell. We're not gonna dive into hell. We're gonna dive into the topic of hell because I think we need to understand the gravity of it. So when we say something like, you know, damn you, you know, damn it, I'm so, that damn person over there and I, you know, just, I wish they'd just go to hell. Man, we should not say that. Not because it's a cuss word or, or a bad thing to say. It's because we don't understand the gravity of those words. So when scripture says that we'll be judged for our works, trust me, God will get His vengeance. God is the just judge. So if God sends somebody to the punishment of eternal hell, it's because they're getting paid for what they did. You and I as believers in Christ, we're not getting what we deserve. We're not getting what we deserve. Well, Pastor, I wasn't that bad. I'll never forget, I was roofing a house one time. I know, that's hard to believe. It was, it wasn't a very good roofing job either. Me and my friend, we were roofing this house. I was like eighteen, nineteen. I'll never forget this conversation, and I'll just call him Joe Bob. Joe Bob and I are on the roof of this house and, and we're talking about God. And I said, well, tell me about the day you got saved. And he looks at me and he's, and he's going, nothing changed. I really wasn't that bad. Nothing changed in my life. I don't know. I just said this prayer. Nothing really. So I sat there and I thought, what? You weren't that bad. Do you understand the gravity of lying? Do you understand the gravity of rebelling towards your parents? I mean, did you ever smoke a little pot? Yeah, yeah. Did you ever get drunk? Yeah. Do we not understand the gravity of that? I'm not saying that you're this horrible person if you've done those things. I'm just saying the separation from a holy God. The reason we don't understand the gravity of hell is because we don't understand the gravity of sin and how that hurts God and how that separates, separates or severs us from God. So to understand this death, this lake of fire, we need to really be careful that we don't want people to go to hell. Listen, there's people who have done horrendous crimes against humanity. Horrendous crimes against children and the innocent, against you. God says, it's our job to forgive them. God will punish them. So our prayers, God, would change their heart so they would never do that again and they wouldn't get what they deserve like we won't get what we deserve. Can I get an amen? So it says, "The sea gave up the dead who were in it, death in Hades delivered up the dead who were in them." Just to repeat, death and Hades are gonna deliver up people that are being held there until judgment. We cannot pray them out of this place. It's too late to receive Jesus after you breathe your last. There's no second chances in heaven. God's not gonna, oh, okay, I just did that to fool you down there and I'm letting everybody in. That, that's not biblical. That's very popular, but it's not biblical. I would love to say everybody goes to heaven, but then that would make the scripture and God a liar. So either I, I don't know the truth or God tells the truth. So we need to be careful how we read that. "Death in Hades delivered up the dead that were in them, and they were judged, each one according to their works. Then death and Hades were cast into the lake of fire." After this judgment, there is no more death. There is no more holding place or a holding place for the dead. There is no temporary Sheol or Hades. There's only the lake of fire. The lake of fire is eternal. We have to understand after judgment, no one in heaven will ever die or ever suffer the penalty of what they did on earth. Jesus Christ has taken our penalty. After Jesus died on the cross, He went to hell. He paid the price. He went down and He set people free by preaching to the captives in hell or Hades. He took the keys. He took the authority. That's why the angels given the key back to the bottomless pit or the angels from heaven has given the key. Jesus holds the key. He destroyed your penalty on the cross. He destroyed your eternal damnation on the cross. "Then death and Hades were cast into the lake of fire." This is the second death. Anyone not found written in the book of life was cast into the lake of fire. Listen, is your name written in the book of life? A lot of people say, oh, yeah, uh, I'll say, when did you ask Jesus in your heart? Oh, Pastor, Jesus has always been in my heart. He's been in my heart since I was a little kid. You're born without Jesus in your heart. You're born without your name in the book of life. We're, we're not just there automatically. We're not there because we grew up in a Christian home. We're not there because we got sprinkled as a baby from the priest. We're not there. We're there by our choice. We're not there by our choice. You're either in the book of life by choice or you're not there by choice. It's your choice. It's your free will. So the question is, is your name written in the Lamb's Book of Life? Well, I don't know. Well, listen, to, to know, ask Jesus Christ to be your Lord and Savior. Repent from your sin, turn from your wickedness and follow Christ. It's, it's that simple. Get baptized, get into a Bible believing church, get filled with the Holy Spirit. Start doing the miraculous. Start speaking in tongues. Start laying hands on the six. Start preaching in the streets. Start funding ministries. Start doing whatever God's called you to do. But make sure your name is written in the Lamb's Book of Life. It would be as simple as, hey, did you call and make reservations with the hotel? Oh, yeah, they know I'm coming because I've been coming there since I was a little kid. They don't know you're coming. You gotta get your name in the book. You gotta get on the roll, if you will. Here's some, here's some things, uh, here's some insight. The dead in verse twelve are spiritually dead people that did not accept Christ. The dead in Christ are people that received Jesus Christ. You're either dead in Christ or you're dead outside of Christ. To be dead in Christ is to die today, to die to self. When I died to myself, I gave my life to Jesus. I said, Jesus, come into my heart. I died to my plan, my agenda, my hopes, my wants. I wanted to be a drummer in a rock and roll band and own a bar on Sixth Street. That was the height of my existence when I was seventeen, eighteen years old. Oh, yeah. That was gonna be, that was Cameron's life, as foolish as that sounds. God says, if you'll die to me, I'll give you life. You wanna find life, die. Well, not in the physical, in the spiritual. So you're gonna die one way or the other. It's best to die now. Humble yourself before God so that you could live forever. Um, there's two kinds of judgment. One is a judgment of condemnation. Listen, these believers, these unbelievers, they're being condemned. They're going before the judge. There is no jury. It's kinda interesting. There's no jury. There's just a judge and he's righteous and he's true. He doesn't leave judgment up to a panel of twelve. He doesn't say, hey, where's the defense and the counsel? There's no defense. God is a pure and righteous judge. So the judgment here at the Great White Throne is the judgment of the unbeliever and there is condemnation there. That's the worst word we could ever hear. I condemn you to hell. Man, you could get a life sentence, a triple life sentence in a, in a prison on the earth and it's nothing compared to eternity outside the presence of God. Psalms one oh three. Um, or the, there's the second kind of judgment. Um, the second kind of judgment is the judgment for believers. So I, I know I went through the Great White Throne kinda fast because I really wanna focus on the judgment for believers because I, I think most people listening tonight receive your Lord and Savior. And here's some of our ignorance as believers. We don't think we're gonna go to judgment. Now, listen, I, I wanna say emphatically as clear as I can. The believer, the Christian, doesn't go to the judgment of condemnation. You're not gonna stand before God and he say, you remember when you were sixteen and you robbed Seven-Eleven and, and you stole that money and you shot that guy and you slept with that girl? Listen, if you're in Christ, He's forgiven you of your sin. So just say that, if I'm in Christ, He has forgiven me of my sin and I won't be judged for my sin. Okay? But let's take our Bibles and let's turn and read out of Ephesians, chapter two, verse eight real quick. And then we're gonna go to what's called the Bima seat of judgment. I think it's easy for us to understand that, that men and women who don't know Jesus are going to go to judgment and they're gonna go to hell. And there are different judgments in hell. No judgment in hell is good. So let me just make that emphatically clear. But I do believe God gives us what we deserve and when we don't know Him and that's hell. Ephesians, chapter two. Listen to this. I wanna talk about the second judgment. The second judgment is like a judge would judge an athletic competitor. So let's say you are in the boxing ring with somebody else and you go the full twelve rounds or however many rounds. And there's gonna be judges that are gonna score your performance. They're, they're scoring, hey, did, did he, you know, who really won that round? Neither one of them got knocked out. Neither one of them got the KO, but who judged? It would be like a judge performing a, uh, an Olympian, um, you know, on, on the, on the beam, that, that, what do you call that, that beam where they flip and they do all these things or, you know, gymnastics? And the judges are judging their performance so they get like a, a nine point O or a, a, you know, a ten or what? Think about it, but, um, the judgment you and I are gonna go to is a judgment of what we did as believers. Now, listen to this verse because most Christians know the first part of this verse, but we don't know the second half. So go to your own Bible, Ephesians, chapter two, and let's just start, um, in verse eight. "For by grace you have been saved through faith." We're saved by God's grace. Grace is not giving us what we deserve. Mercy is giving us what we don't deserve. Grace is not giving you what you deserve. I deserve hell. You deserve hell. We don't deserve God. We don't deserve heaven. We don't deserve God, we don't deserve heaven, we did, we're not good enough, I mean, we just, he loves us. For by grace, grace also equals power and presence. For by the power of God you're saved, by the presence of God in your life, you're saved through faith. Now listen to what it says, this is where, uh, not of yourselves lest anyone can boast, it is a gift of God. Okay, basically again, Billy Graham had to repent of his sins. He didn't get a free pass because he would be the world's greatest preacher one day. The Virgin Mary had to repent of her sin. What? Yeah, she wasn't perfect. She birthed. The perfect. But she herself was birthed from a mom and dad who were sinful. She had to repent. I know that's crazy, but we gotta understand, everybody has to repent. And it's for by grace, we're saved. Through faith, not of anything we did. So that none of us can boast. Mary's not walking around heaven, yeah, I'm Jesus's mama. That's why I got saved, no, no, no. She's, she says, when I saw my own boy on the cross. I realized how perfect he was and how corrupt I was. And I received him as my Savior. See, we received Jesus. And by grace he saves us. Now listen, if that was the end of the story. Hey, God saved you so you can go to heaven. If that was it, it would be cruel of him to save you at the age of fifteen. And make you live to be ninety-five, that'd be cruel to make you live here eighty years. Before you got to go to heaven. If heaven was what it's all about. It would be cruel to save you. And not instantly kill you and take you with him. See, if it was just about you getting saved. And that's all it's about, oh, it's just, just about me getting saved, I got my ticket, I'm Willy Wonka, I got one of the five golden tickets. It's just about you getting on the train, getting on the plane, getting on the J train, the Jesus train, if it's just about you getting on the train. Then it's cruel to leave you alive for the rest of your life. Cause it's not about you going to heaven. It's not. That's your reward. But it's about you getting saved to do works. See, the works come after salvation. The works do not get you saved. You can't be good enough for Jesus. He's good enough, he rescued you and I from our sin. Listen to this. For by grace you've been saved through faith and not of yourselves, Cameron. It is the gift of God, not of works lest anybody should boast. Ten, for Cameron, put your name here, for Cameron, you are his workmanship. What? Yeah, you're, you're his, his. A project, I know, yeah. Cameron, you're his craftsmanship. You're his jar, he's the potter, you're the clay, he's forming you, man, he's push, he is building, he's ripping out. He's redoing, he's busting up the concrete because you're leaking, I mean, he, he's doing all sort, we're his work, we're his craftsmanship. You've been making that blanket for, for that baby, you, you, that, we are the craftsmanship of God. For you are Cameron, his workmanship created in Christ Jesus. Listen, I know that you were created in your mama's belly. But you were recreated in Jesus Christ. People say, well, I was just born this way, I was born a hothead. Then you need to get reborn. Need to get born again. I was just born an addict, I'm a good addict, I'm just born, you need to get born again. See, it's his craftsmanship in Christ Jesus. And you read it in your own Bible, the next three words. For we, Cameron, you're his workmanship created in Christ Jesus for good works. Adam, hey man, Adam, I created you, what'd you create me for, God? To manage the garden, go do something good for me. See. You're his workmanship created in Christ Jesus. God prepared. Here, this, he, he, he didn't stop. God prepared beforehand that we should walk in them, listen. Before you were born, God knew. I need you. To walk in Africa. And give shots to sick babies. Yep, you're, you are a prideful, arrogant, cocky, rich physician. Living in the hill, thinking I gave you this great brain and intellect to heal hearts. So that you could drive a Tesla and live up in the hills and behind the double gated community. But I just saved you from your pride. You know why I created you, you know why I gave you that gift? So you would use that for people in Africa that cannot pay you. You mean, God, God didn't save me, he didn't save me just to bless me, so I could just live the rest of my life blessed? The blessing is doing the work he created you to do. See, the world says, Cameron, grow up and be whatever you wanna be. That's a lie. Grow up and be who God created you to be and then you'll be fulfilled. See, again, I wanted to be a rock, a drummer, literally, in a rock and roll band, not because I got talent. Cause I wanted to get the girls. I thought drummers, they get the girls. I'm gonna own a bar, I'm gonna be cool, I'm gonna get drunk, I'm gonna stay high, I'm asleep, I'm gonna do whatever I want. God says, Cameron, I've saved you from that foolish. Temporary mindset. And by the way, you never would've made it. You're no good, I mean, you know, he put me in my place, amen, Cameron, you're white, you have no rhythm, what's wrong with you, what are you thinking? I, I don't know. And he says, but I made you to do something better than that, I prepared work for you. See, there's a judgment coming for the believer. And I think it's almost a little more scary. Than the judgment of the unbeliever. The unbeliever judgment is horrendous. It's hell, literally. But there's a Bema seat, B E M A, the Bema seat of Christ. And it's the judgment for the believer. Hey Cameron, I gave you five talents, Jesus tells this parable in Matthew twenty-five. Cameron, I gave you five talents. Now listen, a talent in that scripture was like a hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, it was, it was a value, it was some money, hey, listen. Uh, this, the parable Jesus says is that this master gives his servants. You need to read it for yourself, he gives his servants, it's a scary word. He gives some of them five talents. He gives one of them five talents, he gives one of them two talents and one, one talent. And the servant that he gave five talents to went and invested that talent and reaped five more talents. The one that had two ser- two talents, went and invested it, worked it. And received two more talents. And in both of those cases, they come back to judgment, they come back to be accountable. And God says, well done. Man, since you did so well, enter into my rest, good and faithful servant. They invested what was given to them. The wicked servant had one talent, he hides it, he doesn't do the work. Call it lazy, call it apathy, call it rebellion, I don't know. And God says, you wicked lazy servant, take from him what he has and give it to the one that I could trust. And he sends him to torment. It's a scary, scary parable. Oh, well, yeah, but one day I heard my preacher say, I can do whatever I want and I'll, I'll never. You need to read your own Bible, read your own Bible, it's another topic for another day. There's a judgment for the believer, listen to these verses. You don't have to believe me. But this judgment for the believer is like a judge in a competition. Second Corinthians five ten, for we must all appear before the judgment seat of Christ. That each one may receive the things done in the body. According to what he has done, whether good or bad. Knowing therefore the terror of the Lord. Paul wrote this, a Christian guy, he loved Jesus, he wrote thirteen books of the Bible. Hey Cameron, you're gonna appear before the judgment seat of Christ. Oh, I'm saved, I'm not going to judgment, uh, Cameron. Paul, I'm writing the Bible, um, yeah, I know what I'm talking about. We're gonna all appear, you and I, at the judgment seat of Christ, so that each of us may receive the things done in the body. Oh, okay, uh, according to what he's done, whether good or bad, knowing therefore the terror or the fear, not in. You're gonna hurt me, but the respect of the Lord. We persuade men. That's what's happening right now, I'm trying to persuade you. But we all, but. And I trust we were well known in your conscience. We are persuading people to be ready for judgment, Romans fourteen ten. But why do you judge your brother, Cameron? Cameron, why do you judge your brother? Or why do you show contempt for your brother? For we shall all stand before the judgment seat of Christ. Uh-oh, how can I love God if I don't love my brother? God says, you love me, you've never seen me. But you see your brother and you hate him, how can you say you love me if you never saw me? What if I look like your brother? Oh, you, oh, I don't know, okay, Psalm sixty-two. Also to you, oh Lord, belong mercy, belongs mercy, for you rendered each one according to his works. Matthew sixteen, for the son of man will come in the glory of his father and his angels. And then he will reward each according to his. Works. Knowing that whatever good anyone does, he will receive the same from the Lord, whether he is slave or free. Ephesians six eight, sorry, knowing whatever good anyone does, he will receive the same from the Lord. Revelation three eleven, behold Cameron, I'm coming quickly, hold fast to what you have so that no one can take your crown. Now listen, this is what I wanna say and, and so forgive me if I'm having a hard time saying this. For those of us who are in Christ. God's given us a work to do. God says, hey, listen Cameron. I've given you money, tie it. That's a work. Hey Cameron, I've given you grace and mercy and forgiveness. Give that guy grace, show that girl mercy. Give that abuser forgiveness. Hey Cameron, I've given you the ability to speak on my behalf. Don't use that to just make money and become popular and to be a famous preacher or. You know, get on the circuit and use that for your own glory and just be a motivational speaker, use that to bring people into the kingdom. You're gonna be held accountable, don't lose what I've given you. Remember in Revelation earlier, it says, I'll remove your lampstand. That's one of the penalties to the churches is, hey, listen, if you don't get your act together and start working the way that I need you. I'll just remove your influence and you'll lose your reward. You'll be judged, but you won't get anything. You know the band Casting Crowns, well, they get their name from the elders who are before the Lord and they cast their crown. They're giving back to God, see, when you do work for God. It doesn't take you long to realize, man, I didn't do that. God, I did not really prepare that much for that sermon. I don't know how twelve people got saved, I don't even know what the Greek word meant. I sure don't know what it meant in Hebrew, I couldn't tell you four different hermeneutical exegesis, the definitions, I could. Man, I fumbled, I s- I think I said Jack and Jill went up the hill and fetched some water and four people got saved, I, I don't know what I said. God saying, yeah Cameron, thank you for being willing, I just need you to step out. Oh, okay, cool. And all these people, hey, great sermon. Uh, man, thank you, Jesus. See, when, when you're doing work for God, you realize very quickly you didn't do the work. Stacy and I have been successful in business. And, and, and. And I look back and I go, God, you so protected me like eight million different times. Where I didn't sabotage my own business or God, I don't know how we got that check in the mail, I don't know how we made it. So people come in, they're like, man, great job, man, you did, you, you did a real good job, I'm like. Man, honestly dude, I don't know how it all felt together. I don't know how, so I'm like going, God, thank you, I don't know how you did that. Listen, God's called you to a work. Don't let that fear you, don't let the devil tell you, you're not good enough, you're good enough because you got saved. Well, I don't have a seminary degree. God didn't ask you to go get the credential. He just asked you to go do, well, I, I can't write a book, I can't, I can't. Can you go spend an hour to nursing home? Just sit next to a person that's at the last stage of their life and just listen to their stories? That are very repetitive, that you heard eighty-four times before, but you smile and you just love on them? Cause maybe you'll heal their heart, maybe they'll get saved at the last minute. Maybe that's what God's work for you to do. I don't know if God needs you to be a street preacher or if he just needs you to change diapers. But if it's a str- if it's, if it's a street preacher, praise God, if it's changing diapers, praise God, because. There's no difference in the, in the, in the work, it's for his kingdom. And there'll be more people rewarded that we've never heard of. That are doing more for God. But they think their work, see, the devil wants you to think your work means nothing. It means a great deal. Some people go, well, I just got one talent, but Billy Graham, man, he had five talents, that's fine. Doesn't matter, God didn't give everybody five talents, didn't give everybody a voice like Chris Tomlin. Didn't give everybody the ability to write books like Randy Acorn, didn't give everybody. The ability to lead businesses like Kathy Truitt of Chick-fil-A, he gave some people one talent and that's raising that baby. So did you raise that baby for Jesus? God's gonna say, how'd you do on raising your kids, see, husbands, he's gonna, we're gonna get to heaven, he's gonna go, how'd you love your wife? Man, that was your first church is your wife. Oh man, Noah, I had a church of ten thousand people, yeah, but you lost your marriage. Did you do the first work? Did you do the most important work or did you just do that which you thought? See, God's called us and we're gonna be accountable. I'll reference it like this and I, I cannot talk about these two girls. Enough because they so inspire me, but in ninety-nine, April twenty of ninety-nine, two young girls were on their way to school. In Colorado, Columbine High School. One's name's Rachel, one's name's Cassie. Two boys walk up to them with guns in their hand. And say, do you believe in God? Now listen, these young ladies were at the, the beginning stage of their life. They're not even driving cars yet. They're, they're just, you're going to high school. They don't even really know what they wanna do with their life, but God saved Cassie. And saved Rachel before April twenty of nineteen ninety-nine. They got. How, I've watched some videos and I've forgotten the information, but they got saved before April twenty of ninety-nine. They didn't get saved because they stood up and denied. You know, uh, died for Christ, they didn't get saved because of that. They got saved by God's grace. And whether they said yes or no, God still would've taken them to heaven. But he saved them. To do the works of saying yes when a gun's in their face. They were called to martyrdom. They were saved to be martyrs. Well, that doesn't sound very nice for God. Listen, take that up with God, but that is an amazing work that they need to do. Why? Because more people have gotten saved. More people, believers have gotten waken, woken up. Because those two girls did not deny Christ that, that morning. And so when they pulled the trigger, I like it best how. And the bullet had their name on it, written on a bullet. When that bullet entered their body and took their physical life. They woke up in heaven. And as they've gone before the Bema seat of Christ, God says, Cassie, why should I let you in heaven? Rachel, why should I let you in heaven? And I, I'm just giving some freedom here, they probably fell on their face and say, we didn't do anything deserving of. And I, I'm just giving some freedom here, they probably fell on their faces and say, we didn't do anything deserving of heaven, and they didn't. No, dying for Christ did not give them the right to get into heaven. They said, man, I don't know, I was like fifteen, and God. Or youth camp. He just changed me, God, I don't know, he saw me and he changed my life. And God says, he did that because he had a great work for you to do two years later, or six weeks later, I don't know the timeframe. And he's gonna go, why should I let you in heaven, they're gonna say, because Jesus saved us. And then he's gonna lift them up and he's gonna say, you know what? You died for me, here's your reward, that's the work I created you to do. I know it doesn't make sense to your parents on earth, they're, they're so upset right now, I know it doesn't make sense to your friends who are crying at their loss, but. Girls, you're gonna preach for eternity, people will remember that. See, see, they have a crown that they're wearing around heaven. And people are stopping them going, tell me, how did you get that crown? Dude, I don't know, God overcame me, I wanted to say no, I was trying to scream, but out of my mouth says, yes, I love God, I thought I was gonna scream. I thought I was gonna fall on my face, I don't know how I had the boldness, I didn't really do it, Christ did it in me. And now he's giving me a reward for something he did through me, I don't know how it happened, but it's so cool. See, there's rewards, and God. To your post. On the wall. Don't. Street, cause you're gonna lose the work of raising your son to be. Called you to be, I need you to set that example and, and, and be that for your boy, cause I've got a calling. And listen, let's stop this generational divorce pattern, let's stop this generational pornography issue, let's. Let's get out of the work of darkness and into the work of light, there's a calling on your life, you were saved to do works. You were not saved to go to heaven. You were saved to do works, you may be eighty-four years old and go, man, I've never heard this before. And I've wasted eighty-four, that's okay, God can do in one day what you wasted in eighty-four years. He may have saved you for one encounter at HEB, maybe God's calling you to write a check. And fund that missionary in Zambia, Africa, or Roatan, Honduras. Or, or build that house for those homeless kids, maybe that's your work. See, some work is to make a lot of money, some work is to heal, God's calling you to be a surgeon. He's not calling everybody, one of the other things is, we think we get saved and we need to go do Christian work. Christian work is fixing carbureators on cars in the name of Jesus. And getting paid for it, and tithing that and funding the kingdom. And maybe God's calling you to do free mechanic work, I don't know, cutting hair may be the work. The work may be serving in the United States military, the work may be becoming the president one day, I don't know what the work is. But it is a good thing, and the thing is, God's gonna hold us accountable, Cameron, listen, did you go get? Did you go do what I called you to do? That's the judgment seat of Christ, that's the seat. I believe most people watching are gonna go to. There's this crazy story. Or theo- theologically corrected this, so just stay with me, but I think it's pretty closer than we think. This preacher dies and he goes to heaven, and Saint Peter is showing him around and. And, uh, the preacher's got this question that he keeps wanting to ask the guy, uh, that he wants to ask Peter. But he's holding it back and Peter's showing him the rose gardens. On the mountains, and he's taking him on tours of, of this, but the preacher really wants to know, where's my house, where's my house? And Saint Peter finally says, hey, uh, you know, do you wanna see like where you're gonna live? And the preacher's like, yeah, yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah, man, I, I wanna see my mansion in the sky. And so Saint Peter starts walking down the street and all of a sudden he sees this beautiful mansion like never before, I mean. It's amazing what's up there. And, and he's like, oh man, this is the coolest house I've ever seen, and, and so Saint Peter's like, yeah, you see this house on the hill? And the preacher's like, oh yeah, I see it, and he goes, yeah, that belongs to, to Suzie over there, and he's like, oh, it's not mine? No, 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 yours is down this way, so they walk a little further and he sees this other beautiful mansion, a little lesser. But he's like, oh, this one's good too, this one, he goes, yeah, that one belongs to Johnny, you know, he, he did a lot of work for me in Kansas City, nobody knew his name, but. He was just a computer programmer, but man, he did, he, he gave more to the kingdom than anybody else, uh, ever thought about giving. And did more, he did the work God called him to do, and, and all of a sudden they go from house to house, and the houses are getting a little less in. Value and, and ominous, and, and all of a sudden he sees this little shack down the street, and he's like, dude. What, man, we went from like a fifty thousand square foot mansion on the hill with double gates and Ferraris in the front garden. Who's that, that shack down there, and, and Saint Peter goes, hey, here's your house, and he goes. Man, there must be some mix-up, I was a pra- I was a preacher, don't you remember, I was a preacher, and. And he goes, yeah, but most of your sermons were for yourself, and. Most of your sermons were for your own, and, you know, we built the best house with what you sent us. You didn't send much up here, you didn't store much treasure in heaven. See, treasure in heaven isn't money, it's people. Treasure in heaven. Is not money, it's people. And the way you store people in heaven is to do the work God called you to do. Well, I'm just a pawn, I, I don't really do much, do what God called you to do. Great book by Randy Alcorn called Safely Home, of a guy named, uh, Li Twang. Street sweeper in Communist China, it's a true story. Said, I'll be the best street sweeper you've ever seen for Jesus. He was a locksmith's assistant, said, I'll be the best locksmith's assistant that you've ever seen. Listen, God's called you to do a work, can I get an amen, go do the work. I don't even know what time it is. The Book of Life. Is your name written in the Book of Life, listen to this, I just wanna read these real quick. Exodus thirty-two thirty-two, yet now, if you will forgive their sin, but if not, I pray, blot me out of the book. Which you have written, this is Moses talking about the Book of Life. Psalms sixty-nine twenty-eight, let them be blotted out of the book of the living and not written with the righteous. Revelation twenty-one seven, but there shall be no means entering, any, anything that enters heaven. That defiles, causes an abomination or lie, but only those who are written in the Lamb's Book of Life. It goes on and on, Philippians four three, whose names are written in the Book of Life. Luke ten twenty, but rather, uh, do not rejoice that the demons are subject to you, but rather rejoice that your names are written in heaven. It's one thing to have your name written in the Book of Life, that's a great thing, that's salvation. That's just the beginning. Let the volumes, there's an angel, let the angel that's writing down every word you say, let the words that come out of your mouth. Be words that, that are God, so let, let the work you do be recorded for his glory. Listen, there's so much to say about rewards. Don't lose your reward. I hate it when I hear stories of people who served the Lord and then they quit. Listen, God didn't forsake you, he didn't give up on you, he's not mad at you, he's not punishing you. Whether you've been working in the field for God since six AM, or you just started working five minutes ago with Jesus. Do the work he's called you to do, don't grow weary, don't go tired of doing what's right, doing what's holy. Get back in the game, get back in the game. There's a judgment seat. I pray that you don't go to the great white throne, and I pray God doesn't. Judge you for your sin. But there is a judgment of works. And God will judge us for our works as believers, he saved you to go do something really special for his kingdom. God bless you. Listen, tomorrow night, we'll be back with you at six thirty. We're gonna be in the last two chapters of Revelation, it's gonna be on the kingdom and the city of heaven. A lot of believers say, oh yeah, when I die, I'm gonna go to heaven, and I just like to ask questions, I'll go, what, what do you know about heaven? Oh, oh, not much, uh, I think I'm gonna grow wings and sit on a cloud and play a harp. Boring, boring, boo, I don't wanna go if that's what it's out, I mean, come on, heaven. Is a place. It's a city. You'll do work there too, oh yeah, you'll have a job. Heaven is for eternity, so we're gonna go through heaven, if you have friends that. Don't wanna study the Bible or don't know much about the Bible, please ask them to tune in tomorrow for session nineteen. We'll start our journey into heaven, and we'll get into chapter twenty-two, the last chapter of the Bible. And, um, we'll learn about heaven, we'll learn about entrance into heaven, we'll learn about who's not allowed in heaven. We'll just learn about the kingdom of God, so thank you for joining us. I wanna encourage you to go do what God's called you to do. You may need to go back to school, you may need to pick up the phone and call and ask somebody to forgive you. You may need to, um, write a book or let somebody read the book you wrote. That'd be cool. Maybe you need to rap, maybe you need to do some street preaching. Like my, like, I, like I so wanna call out people right now, but like my street preacher AJ. God so called you to preach, you're so gifted, bro. And I know you are, you are already doing, so don't hear me say you're not doing. Keep doing, go big, go bigger, God's called you out. Happy birthday to my friend Rhonda, by the way, it's her thirty-ninth birthday, I think. Go do what God's called you to do. Good, amen, Father, bless my friends. God, we know you didn't call us to go to church, just to be good little Christian boys and girls, you called us to an important job. So like in the military, whether we are a gunner, or a sniper, or a foot soldier, or a general, or a strategist, or the cook. Or some position, a radio operator, I don't know what position you put us in, I don't know why you saved us. But God revealed that to us, and God, if we're in the wrong position, would you just take us where you need us to go? Just put us back on the right square on the chessboard, God, help us not to move till you move us. God, we love you and we bless you. I thank you for my friends, I thank you for my friends who are preachers, listening, I thank you for my friends who are prophets, like my friend Clement. I thank you for my friends who are, are pillars in the house of God, like Randy. I thank you for my friends who are powerful warriors like Todd. Thank you for the men and women that. Army, and God's got a position for you, love you, God bless you, see you tomorrow night, six thirty, bye.